Seven o'clock, I see we're on now, so I'll call the Wednesday, May 11th, 2022 Nottingham Planning Board meeting to order. If you haven't already in the audience, please sign in so we can record your names in the minutes. First thing we'll do is have a call to order. I'll start on my right.
Sandra Jones.
Robert Davies, Altona.
Ben Bartlett, Boyer Selectman Representative.
Eamonn McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Charlie Anderson.
Blair Hady.
And Mr. Davies will be seated and voting for Ms. Mooney tonight, and Ms. Jones will be seated and voting for Mr. Anderson tonight. All right, we'll just take items in order. So the first item on our public hearing agenda is continued subdivision application, case number 22-002-SUB, an application from Concrete Products of Londonary requesting to create a four lot subdivision. The property is located at 100 Smoke Street, Nottingham, and is identified as map lot 11 lot 3. Is anybody here from that?
Yeah, we have been emailed in requesting continuation until 25th of this month.
Is there any motion or discussion on that?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue case number 22-002-SUB to our May 25th meeting at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 6-0.
Do you get a second to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't read the lips.
For the pledge allegiance, sir. We generally haven't. This board hasn't. Never has. All right, next case on the agenda is case 22-004-SIT, an application from Adventure Camp Rentals LLC requesting to construct a commercial site plan for camper rentals with a 1,485 square foot building. Property is located on Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as map 6 lot 16. If you can just please identify yourself and give us a quick summary of what you're proposing.
Scott Franklson, New Hampshire Land Consultants.
I'm Brett Kazak, owner.
So what we're proposing, Brett and Amy Kazak, Adventure Camping Camper Rentals LLC. It's an existing company that they currently run out of their house in Northwood. They rent tow behind campers at the moment. So as you said, it's on tax map 6 lot 16 on Route 4. This was the lot created of the subdivision that I brought through with J.C. Builders in 2021. It's a commercial lot along Route 4 with 1,300 feet of frontage. The lot's 10.72 acres. And there's two buildable areas on it, the one that we're showing building in, which is 44,500. And then there's one more to the west that's separated by a wetland that's 35,200 buildable area. The wetlands were delineated by Damon Burt of Fraggle Rock Environmental during the subdivision process. And what we're proposing is a 1,485 square foot two-story building. That's the footprint of the building. We are staying 100 feet from the property line town or the state right of way, which pushes us back quite a ways. It's almost 150 feet from the edge of pavement from where the building can be. The parking lot is, we're proposing a 25-foot paved apron off of Route 4. Then it's going to transition into gravel. The gravel parking lot will have eight parking spaces to the to the south of the site, which is towards the power line easement that's on the property. The road coming in is designed to meet DOT standards. It goes down 4%, up 5%, and then coming back down into the site, it's at 7.16%. There's a little bit of a hump there. We're getting up over it. It's not a long, long stretch for the 7%. We do have the 400 feet of sight line either way. It is approximately pretty close to where the existing cut is right now. As you drive by it, it's been there for a long time where they did logging out of, I think, probably for the power lines at some point. Within the plan set, we're showing this no storage along the areas of the parking. The drainage is pretty simple. We're showing the parking lot draining to either side, north-south into swales, which is going to be transported to the backside of the building, into a small detention area, a couple sediment for bays, and then a structure, outlet structure, which will discharge about 90 feet from the wetland through the woods and into the wetland. We're proposing three, or four parking, four lights, three in the parking spaces or in the parking lot, and one along the access road. That was designed by Sharon Lighting, who was the guy for our lighting, and there's no spill of light onto other properties. Landscaping is pretty basic. We showed a couple landscape beds on the road coming in, and then some to the south of the site, and then a couple areas on either side of the north-south, north side and south side of the the structure that we're proposing. The total disturbance of the site is about just under 40,000 square feet, so there's no AOT or Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan that's required. We are asking for two waivers, and we have two permits that we need to obtain, which is the Highway Access Permit, which is submitted. It was submitted last month, about a month ago now. And then, of course, the ES Subsurface System, which will be a quick one once we get to that point. So the two waivers we're requesting are from Article 14, Section 4.24, which your regulations require curbing for any commercial driveway onto a state road. We're asking for a waiver from that curbing. And then the second waiver is from Article 16, Section 111, which is required underground electric. We're proposing to go overhead to the site. In the course, the location of it will be determined by the utility company when that time comes. And I think that wraps it up, and if you have any questions about the business or plans, we'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. And I'll bring it back to Mr. Hady. You were able to review the application, and based on your review, do you feel that we have enough to consider it, to act on completeness?
Yes, I do think we have enough to accept it for complete and consider the application.
Would anybody like to discuss that or make a motion regarding completeness?
I'll make a motion that we find that case number 22-004-SIT be deemed complete.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Mr. Davies. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, and I'll bring it back to Mr. Hady, so if you can go a little bit further in your review of the application.
I want to make a motion on the regional impact.
Sure.
I'll also make a motion that case number 22-004-SIT is not of regional impact.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all opposed, 0. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. You know, I read that Scott covered this, you know, in the first page of the stack report, so I'll jump down to the technical comments, acknowledging completeness, and then just some observations on the site layout. There is the power line easement, which dictates a lot of what they're trying to do here, or where they're trying to do it, I should say. And then there's also this 100-foot setback. So sandwiched between those two things is going to be the building and most of the parking. So you can see that they're right up on the line here, the commercial setback line. And then with grading and such, they don't really have too much room. So I think the building is appropriately situated as it's going to be. The remaining area is going to be eight parking spaces. The leach field will be on the other side, and they're potentially proposing to store their campers there, it looks like. And then the rest is storm, site storm, storm drainage and management. I said four utilerites. Scott has corrected, it's three utility lights. And then it does not look like any illumination reaches any of the properties or out into the road to create any odd glare. And as Scott noted, the electrical line from the street would come in onto the property about halfway up the driveway and to a junction box, and then go underground into the building. So that is speaking to one of their waivers. The board can inquire about that, the need for having it be above ground up that portion of the driveway. But it is underground. And then, again, as mentioned, there was a paved driveway. We need for, well, it'll have a paved apron and the 40-foot concrete pipe underneath, and it's showing some riprap. You know. It would take, I believe that the drainage would come off of the roadway and fall down into that area, so there's a potential for, you know, collection of trash and other, you know, road runoff. So that might be just something the board wants to consider. But that curbing could potentially, you know, capture. But it's not going to be everything. So the two waivers do not seem terribly out of line, but you guys have precedent that exists way before I do, so you guys have to consider that piece as well. Beyond that, I mean, I think it's a pretty standard plan to read, and it's nothing too imposing. But, you know. We can see fit how it works.
All right. All right, thank you. With those, is there anything else, Mr. Frankwitz, that you'd like to add based on those comments?
Just on the utility one, on the waiver, the reason we're asking for overhead is because all the poles are on the other side of the highway or Route 4. Somehow, we're going to have to get across the road. I'm not sure how the utility company is going to make us do that, but that's the intent, is to get it over the road and onto the property overhead. So there's going to be a pole somewhere at that entrance and then into a junction box.
All right, I'll bring it back to the the board, or I guess. I'll bring it back to the board first, and we'll open the public hearing for butter, comments and such. Anybody on the board have any?
Can you explain the parking a little bit? How many RVs are going to be in the lot? And how are they going to know where the parking spots are? And where, and how many cars do you expect to have on the lot at one time?
Let me take that.
Sure. So basically, we have right now eight campers, seven really right now. And, you know, it's random because some campers are long-term rentals, some are not. And it's going to be up to Amy and I to decide, you know, how we're going to place those and so forth as, once we take ownership and develop this property the way we want. It may not be that they're exactly in the parking space at all times, you know, they could be at different locations on the property and that sort of thing as well. We are going to be, you know, having us stay there as well, so parking spaces will be used for cars as well, that sort of thing. So we're going to really decide on how we're going to have a customer drop that camper off once we get that whole process moving and what's going to be safest for them. What we'd like to do is have them turn and use the entire, you know, parking area rather than back into a place, or like if you've ever been camping, like a pull-through situation, so that it just makes more sense for them as they're coming. About 50% of our campers are pickup, and about 50% would you say are delivery as well? So we deliver them, and we also have customers pick them up.
So how, I understand how many RVs are going to be on the lot? How many cars are going to be on the lot?
At any one time, no more than two or three?
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
This is mainly campers that are put on pickups or towed by pickups, not RVs that you drive?
At this point, we do not have any RVs that you drive. I'm not saying we're never going to pursue that, but that's a significant.
That's not what's happening right now.
Exactly, yes.
Is there a max number forecasted at all for, obviously, we're thinking about, you know, the lot size and
Yeah, I mean.
Potentially, you know, boarding it, becoming.
We don't really have a maximum number. This is our second year in business right now. Last year was amazing, and my yard looks crazy right now, but I can tell you. And so, you know, so once we, you know, Amy's working kind of almost full-time on this. I'm still at Co-Brown. And so our hope is that we both are no longer teaching in two or three years. What that maximum would be for campers that we rent, probably never more than 15, you know, in that range. I can't see us managing more than that unless our sons start helping more, you know, that sort of thing.
But I guess what I'm getting to is, you know, obviously, the lot is a certain size and.
There's a limit there, no doubt.
You know, what it would also aesthetics look like having, if it, don't want to see it morph into, unless that's a proposal, like used camper sales or something like that.
Yeah.
Where it becomes just a lot full of.
Yeah, we're not interested in so much buying and selling a lot of used campers. That's not what we do. We will sell campers. We only keep them for three years, and we'll sell them. It's obviously a great lot to be able to sell them from, but that's not what our vision is, if you will, at this point. I'm not a guy that wants to buy old campers and fix them up. Everything we work with is brand new, and then we keep it. Our customers, it's like renting a car. You know, you don't want to rent an old car. It's the same concept.
So I had a question in regards to the utility pole. You got to go through the state to go up and over the highway. Is there a possibility coming in through Smoke Street?
That's about probably 600 feet up the road. I guess that's a utility, you know, the utility company question.
Well, so, yeah, that was actually where I was going to kind of go with it. We could, I didn't know if we're talking about that waiver. So I've had a couple thoughts that, I'm, I actually have a thought that I'm not even sure the waiver isn't terribly needed because the first pole that you're showing is to get you onto your property.
Yeah.
And I believe our regulation reads that it's basically from the property line in, you're supposed to have underground, you know, assuming that you have a pole at the, at the road, underground from there, so. Essentially what's happening, and to that point, yeah, they're going to, the state's going to make you go over it, which some of the houses, I guess just west of you, that's essentially what they have, is lines coming across.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a pole right just west of this. I don't know what the linear distance is, but that's already overhead from the other side of Route 4 to this side.
Yeah, so I think it's more of you guys, yeah, you guys figuring out whatever source, if they're going to do one pole, two poles to come across, but at least based on what you're proposing with the utility pole being on or adjacent to the right of way, I'm not sure even the waiver is needed because they show a drop from that pole for everything else.
What you're proposing, so with the proposed utility pole, front utilities is shown on the plan, that it would be overhead to there, so that's basically the
That's the right of way.
The edge of the right of way from Route 4. And then from that point, it'd be underground.
Right.
Yeah, and do you know if the state generally has any? Do they generally frown upon things like that, like underground utilities being in the right of way? In their right of way?
As far as I got experience, they don't want anything in the right of way.
Especially now they make a directional board trench it.
Yeah. And it may take two poles to get across if it's too much of a sag for Route 4.
Yeah.
Got to be up there.
Luckily, you got a little knoll right there.
Right, yep. Yeah.
That was my feeling, at least on the waiver. I mean, it's always nice to not have waivers if not needed. I just didn't, I think it actually, based on what they're showing, I think it actually meets the spirit of our regulations, and we could potentially eliminate that waiver.
And then another question I had had, and it's hard to see on the plan because of the flashing on it, but the proposed 4K area, you're showing that being under the, under the driveway. Is that, I guess that's different than what we normally see. Is that usually something that the state allows?
Well, you can do parking over, there's a number of different systems you can use. Enviro, which is kind of the footprint we're showing, you need 18 inches over it. They won't have heavy trucks going in there. There'll be vehicles and campers that are pretty light, so. That's where we had the test pit from the original subdivision, and it kind of works.
Yep.
So they could do concrete system too, if they wanted, to make it safer.
And then I think another question would be with the, you know, snow removal and such, obviously with the gravel driveway, it's probably less, I would think that'd be less intense with salt, but obviously with proposed flow for drainage going towards a pretty good-sized wetlands complex. You know, obviously, salt would be a concern, and trying to minimize that, just to whoever uses contractor, there's different accreditation they can get to try to
Yeah.
Minimize that kind of.
So we're obviously a seasonal business, you know, it's summertime business, and we're not sure so much what, I think it's going to be plowed in the winter. It's going to be looked at, I mean, our hope, our hope is to be, you know, heading south after Christmas. And so, you know, but we obviously need to plan for being able to plow in there and so forth. It is one of our concerns is just, you know, we got a lot of money tied up in campers, and we want to be able to, you know, have proper supervision of the property and so forth. And so that's one of our bigger concerns, is just keeping it safe from vandalism or anything. You know, both, it's a funny lot, you know, you've got obvious, we're very visible. You've got obvious access from Route 4, and then people behind it on the power lines, you know. We all know that, you know, a lot of kids and whatever hit the power lines. So that's our big thing, is we want it to be well-lit and, you know, look professional. We've got a beautiful design that we're proud of with the building, and we're going to make it look really nice, you know. And so when it comes to plowing and so forth, I'll be the one doing that in the next five years, that's for sure.
And then.
Probably not salting ever, to be honest with you.
Okay. And I know it was mentioned about the lighting, you know, that's obviously, so my guess, it's all downlighting and try to minimize.
Yeah.
We don't have dark skies ordinance in, but it's part of our master plan, and it's an item we try to minimize that. Uplighting and floodlighting and things like that, so.
Yeah.
Obviously, you need some for the site, motion sensors, those kind of things, but.
With the buffer between the site and Route 4 too. They can't, they've got the 100-foot, or probably 50 feet, and then 100 feet. You know, there's going to be a good chunk of woods between this site and Route 4, so. And we want to keep that. What about a sign as far as?
That was going to be my next question.
Okay, great, yeah, we have ideas, but I'm curious what you think.
So we do have, you know, an ordinance for signage, you know, for sizes and lighting and things like that, you know. You know, the super bright LCD ones or LED ones.
Yeah.
Where you're falling into the state right of way. I'm sure that's going to.
Yeah, they won't, they may allow some little thing in the, by the driveway, but they're not going to allow much. So, okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you won't see anything from your property, but state might, it's a monotonously large right of way there, so they might let you and then just throw the provision on it. If we've got to do something, we're just going to move it, but.
Okay.
Hopefully, they don't divide Route 4 anytime soon.
So, yeah, you would just want to take a look at that, that specific area of the zoning regulations, is the signs. Because it's pretty, it's pretty, that one's actually pretty detailed.
Okay.
I had another one on the lights. Is there any intent? You mentioned, is there going to be off hours? Are you just going to, is there going to be like reduction in lighting?
So.
Overnight, or is it basically, keep a minimum number on, obviously, for security?
Yeah, I mean, we were thinking motion detector lights, that sort of thing. I did read something that lights need to be off by a certain dusk to dawn kind of feel or something. I forgot what I read. We're into following whatever the rules are, at the same time doing our best to protect the property.
Yeah.
So whatever ordinance makes sense, we'll live by that.
I know those glion fixtures, you can, like you said, you can have some be motion censored. You could have, the one closest to the driveway could be a, you know, dusk to dawn feature, but something to look into because keeps your bills down too if they're not full wast all night.
Yeah.
The only other thing I had, obviously, any time we get into commercial, industrial, commercial, even residential, I think it's always good for us to make sure that it, does it meet our zoning. So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at what's permitted, because we have a permissive zoning ordinance, meaning we say what's permitted, and everything else is considered non-permissible. I don't know, Blair, if you had a chance to look at that, or we should just discuss that as a board for the permitted uses. I wasn't here for the conceptual. I was, had COVID at that time, I think, so. Apologize, this was already brought up.
I don't remember it being brought up. I mean, it's, you know, it's pretty broad about what uses are allowed.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's listed as a non-use.
Yeah, so we have permitted retail wholesale establishment, which service facility, including eating lodging, theater cultural center, house of worship, professional office space, government buildings, mortuaries. I mean, based on yeah, I'm sorry, there's a couple educational facilities, and there's special exceptions, but that really gets more into like industrial and such.
That's a combination of the first two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if anybody wants to speak towards that, but I think in the current state of the proposal, this falls within, within those permitted uses. Is there any other board discussion before we open up the public hearing?
Yeah, I had one more. I know with site plan, or we believe in some subdivision, we send this out to peer review, but I, I don't, my opinion is that, you know, I don't think we need any other feedback from anybody else on this, even though there's a drainage analysis. I did take a look at it, and this thing is, the pond's definitely adequately sized for our current regulations of 25-year storm. The state often requires a 50-year storm, and I think they're providing over, almost two feet of, over two feet of freeboard at the 25-years, so I think it's safe to say that it works for everything else. So I think that's the only thing that, you know, generally requires review, but I did take a look at it, and I thought it was a pretty well-put-together analysis and pond design.
So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak for, for the application can come up first. Anybody to speak against, or just general comments can come up second. So if you have any questions or comments about the application, as in a butter, please come up to the table. All right, anybody that would like to speak against, or just has general questions, now's a chance, come on up to the table and make those heard, please. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All right. So that we should act on the, unless it's further discussion by the board, this would be a good time to act on the waivers first, and then, you know, we can have additional discussion. So we have two waivers before us. If anybody needs a copy of those, I have my copy here.
Should I make a motion to remove a waiver? How does that work? Or we keep it as is?
I think it's, I'm sure, you must be speaking about the overhead utility part. I don't think there's a harm in keeping it.
I'll start with that one, if you don't mind.
Yep.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver request from Article 16, Section 1, subsection 1, to allow above-ground utilities with final location to be determined, coordinated with the utility company.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 6-0. All right, that's, and then the second waiver was regards to Article 14, Section 4.24, requesting a waiver for the curbing. And Mr. Frankwitz, can you, can you explain why the, why the because it seems like there's plenty of space and everything there, but what's the reasoning for that waiver?
Just a maintenance issue for plowing snow and the drainage to flow off the, flow off the site. And there'll be no curbing anywhere else on the site, so. Kind of eliminate it to make it as simple as possible.
Technically, that area, technically, the road, the cut there is, I would think the state's purview, so I don't know if they normally, again, require any kind of curbing beyond, beyond that.
If there was a closed drainage system, it would. Happy to make another motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver request from Site Plan Review Regulations, Article 14, 4.2, subsection 4, to allow a commercial driveway without curbing.
And I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Jones. Any further discussion? All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 6-0. All is opposed, motion carries six zero. All right, back to the board, any, is there any further discussion about the application, any, uh, at the board level?
So is the only other permit you need the DOT at this point?
DOT and the septic, which is quick, so. DOT was submitted mid-April, as we know.
All monuments would have already been set from the prior subdivision.
What's that?
All monuments have already been set from the prior subdivision.
Yeah, everything, well, I'll set that, yeah.
Good luck with DOT.
And I think, just from the side, I think obviously this built lot on vault makes more sense, the other one would cross wetland, require variance, um, or a different curb cut. And obviously coming in off Smoke Street with the frontage wouldn't make any sense from, from that part either, so. It leaves it in the hands of, uh, of DOT, so.
I just, I just wanna point out that, um, in Article fourteen five, uh, four five, um, access to state highway, we require a written approval prior to the final approval. So we'll have to raise that a condition.
Yeah, that's state DOT driveway permit, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Is there any, if there's no further discussion, uh, I think a motion would be warranted at this point. Uh, like, well, I guess the only other discussion I have, we didn't talk about hours, there's not really a noise generating facility, um. It does a residential, but I don't know if there's any operating hours that were proposed as part of the plan. And then I guess back to my original question about max number of vehicles on the site, you know, might be. Obviously, you own it now and you have a plan and presented it as, you know, keeping it very professional, um. But the, the approval, if it were to be granted, follows the site, so sometimes things sell off and.
Sure.
So we wanna just make sure we don't, um, you know, my only thing would be worry about potentially aesthetics for, you know. Used campers or used car sales or something there later on in life where there's twenty, thirty, forty, fifty vehicles. Sitting there, um, and we didn't do our due diligence on this part, so. I don't know, Mr. Haney, if, if that would make sense on our part to just find a number that's mutually agreeable to, um. Before it would require expansion or change of use.
Uh, yeah, I, I, it.
Without over.
Exactly, finding something that is agreeable is always, uh, important, um, but, um. You know, I would imagine if they start to exceed it, then they could come back and talk to you about it.
Right, I don't wanna make the number too low where it's, you know, it ties their hands beyond where they can.
Yeah.
Business and.
Are you talking about campers at this point, like max campers?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Or, uh, you know, you could use the site as a limiting factor that it's not gonna just spill out onto the grass or something for that. You know, start cutting out, cutting down trees and throwing campers back there.
Has to be contained to the gravel surface it's shown.
Exactly, which is a smart move for a lot of reasons, one, I mean, you start disturbing all the soil, it's gonna, and it's uncontrolled, it'll start filling in the wetlands and then eventually get down the river. I mean, there's a lot of justification for being able to do something like that, um, and it's just, it's just smart business from your end, just to contain it to areas that.
So are you suggesting that the, the limitation should be that all the parking's on the gravel instead of a certain number of vehicles?
Yeah, um, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm just putting, putting options out here, right?
Well, not.
I, I was asked, you know, to, to what I thought, um, one thing to consider is that, uh, if they start, like, right now, those, the pull behinds are very small. They don't take up a lot of space, if you can, let's say they can fit fifteen back there, but if they, um. Want to get into something else, it starts to chew into, you know, their, their limited number because, uh, of, you know, the size differences and stuff. So, I don't know, keeping it contained to the gravel area is something that I think you can justify, I think you can stand behind in areas, um, you know, more than reasonable. But if you wanna go with a number, that's fine too, I think, it's entirely up to you, um, but again, it's a mutual thing too.
Problem with the numbers, uh, gravel dri- uh, gravel parking lot, how are you gonna designate the parking?
Get bigger gear to.
Well, they are required, uh, by regulation to have eight. At this point in time, it's only gonna be, you know, maybe a couple, two of them for, as employees and then, you know, maybe a visitor coming to look at a camper before they take it off-site. So, you know, it depends on how you wanna look at that, do they always have to have eight spaces available to, to, for, um, turnover parking? Or, uh, do they just need to show that they can have it? You know, that's, that's something for you to decide, but, um, they're showing it on the plan and then they're showing on the other side is where they would park, store the campers. They're meeting the regulations as it is right now.
Buzz, to your point, it probably, I assume it's probably, I don't think you could really delineate them, it's more of just reference to show that, that they fit on the site plan.
Yeah, that they have square area.
Yeah, it's basically just showing the space for it.
Since it's gravel, they're probably not gonna line the site.
Right, and then, you know, I don't know if the state would, you know, nothing be, just be concerned about would be, you know, if they're the larger, starting to get in the larger campers. You know, obviously try to use those for advertising so that, you know, if they're parked up closer to Route four, create a problem with sidelines and coming out of that stretch of, uh, Route four. Not, you didn't say you're gonna do any of that, but it just, again.
Well, limiting it to not being parked on the driveway or stored on the driveways is certainly, uh, you know, I, I mean, that's a safety issue, I, I agree with you. Anyone pulling in or off the site.
And it seems like, again, that, it seems like that would make sense based on the way the proposal's drawn, it's cause you have a lot of landscape area in, uh, detention ponds anyway. Off, right off the edge of the, the gravel area, so I don't really see where there would be room for, say, parking off that anyhow, but.
Well, they did, uh, you know, they did mention that in one of the plans, that it's like future development area or, or additional.
Just additional parking, I think.
Just the obvious.
That that is.
Uh, look at C, C, C two, is that the one you're looking at?
Probably, it was one of them.
Yeah, it's just a box, basically shows, there's the eight spaces on one side, the other side just says future parking for other campers.
City, uh, potential parking area for campers.
You know what, let's sheet that down, Mr. Frankwoods.
Yeah, it's number three, it's on, it's within the gravel area.
Oh, it says thirty thousand square foot buildable area, you're just saying that that's what meets the regulations, right? So I guess I, yeah, I, I interpreted that it's like, it could potentially be an expansion of the building or parking, you know, cause they show hatched.
And if, if all goes well for the, for the applicant, you know, and he expands, then obviously you'd have to come back.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find.
Produce, for a new structure, but if they just expand for parking, I don't, you know, that, I don't know, that, okay. I don't know if there's a trigger there unless we set something down.
I think it's just, I think it's find out a condition or have a condition relative to camper parking and employee parking to be limited to the. Proposed gravel area and we can specify as well that no parking's allowed within the entry drive that, I mean.
Yeah, no problem.
I wanna make sure it's mutually agreeable and that, that.
Yeah.
And you leave the door open for them to come back, I mean, if they're successful and they wanna expand and they have to rework the stormwater management, I mean, that's just shaping earth, it's not that big of a deal, so.
Yeah.
But I think it's a fair proposal, because again, you are protecting the wetlands and you are maintaining the integrity of the site.
I think there was mentioned too that you guys need space anyway to be able to maneuver these things, cause.
That's the thing.
You don't wanna be, I don't think anybody wants to, you'd be really good at backing a trailer up, nobody wants to back something in off Route four of that driveway, so.
It's one of the great things about that spot, it's just, it's perfect for us because it's really, Route four is really wide right there.
Yeah.
And when a customer's taking a left-hand turn, there's space for them and that's one of the things that drew us to that spot, um, you know, they can be in that center lane taking a left-hand turn. Into it and, you know, I, you, even taking a right-hand turn, there's tons of room in the breakdown lane where you don't stop traffic by turning. So there's, and yeah, we don't want our customers feeling, you know that feeling when you just rented a car and you're getting used to things. Well, we, we wanna make it as easy as possible without things in their way.
And, uh, Mr. Lemieux, I apologize, I didn't ask or, Mr. Haney, either, did we get any response, any comments on this from either police, fire, road agents?
No, we have, but in response, I could reach out to, do you have any comment?
I don't see any, or much of that. You, you brought up hours though, did you wanna, did you finish that?
No.
You had a comment about, I thought that was maybe something.
No, did you have any, like, uh, proposed hours that would?
That's fine.
Um.
Oh, hours, yeah, I mean, regarding operating hours, there are times when a client drops it off pretty late because they got back late, you know, that happens right now. Uh, but for the most part, it's a, you know, I don't know, what would you say?
For the most part, they, it's usually during the day.
It's kinda, it's, yeah.
Every once in a while, if someone's running late.
So like seven to seven?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I understand.
So like seven to seven are, like, to that point, you've even thrown their seven to seven or by special appointment or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, situations happen, obviously, you know, even we will be pulling in there later at night because we got back for, I mean, I'm not gonna. Sometimes we, it's kinda fun, we do a delivery and then we go somewhere and so we pull in to our place late at night because we climbed a mountain that day or something like that. So there's times where we're doing things like that.
Yeah, and you are in the commercial zone and again, you've got a buffer between you and residential, so it's, um. It's not like that these are trucks that make a ton of beeping, things like that, you're backing them out, so. But no police, no fire response, that's, that's all I did. And the, the, the building is just, just for operations, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna, we're gonna rent, um, different things to the customers sometime, like, right now, we rent kayaks, paddleboards, stuff like that for them as well. So that's, it's just storage of all that, um, the building shows a small loft area up top, I'm changing that plan so. Make it so that the entire upstairs is accessible for storage reasons, I need to be able to, um, you know, there's just a lot of supplies for each camper, that sort of stuff.
No habitation proposed, though?
No.
Yeah. And, um.
How do you clean the, the, the outside inside of the campers, like?
No.
Do you do the power wash or are you looking at?
Yeah, a lot of times I power wash them, but not always, I mean, probably about twice a year depending on the use, but for the most part, they come back pretty good, you know, so it's not too bad.
And for, for waste removal, like septic?
That's the septic and so.
Get that pumped from, or is it get pushed into your leach field or?
Yeah, exactly, so it's, would be used just like a leach field, um, and so we would run that through. And most of the time, it's not even done at our place, most of the time it's done at the campgrounds, um, that's rare that we do that. Really, it's, it's, the customer takes care of that typically, or we do on delivery, but there are times where we would need to as well.
In, in case we're at that point where someone's gonna make a motion to approve with conditions, before we do that, not knowing what the state DOT side is gonna say with the driveway permit. If, if they were to make, if the state was to say, you know, we don't want this location, we wanna move it, whatever, would that be since substantive, where they have to come back, we have to renotice? So is it better to continue until they get that approval or?
I think it's best to.
I just don't wanna waste your time and or your money.
I would, I would be comfortable seeing it approved conditional upon that approval, um, I don't think holding them up waiting for that.
And I think the location that we chose is what's there right now is probably the, the best one, that's, and it's been accessed for a long time, so.
Yeah, I would imagine any comments that they're gonna have is gonna be fudging things.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We can be a blanket no, I mean, unless you guys, unless they were stubborn about some type of law.
And, and you did have a conversation with them. Yeah, they conceptually agreed upon.
They generally like the low traffic businesses. I think the only thing I'd wanna see, I mean, like, to that point, if the driveway, even if a driveway shifts, it would be at least good to have whatever that final plan is of record.
The sightline, yeah.
Yeah, so whatever, I think we just wanna make sure we have whatever's approved by DOT on file, um, assuming that, you know, if it moves fifteen feet here or there. It doesn't impact the circulation to the site, so. I don't know if that needs, I don't know if that needs to be a condition of just to like provide a fund.
I would think any changes from this that were substantive, like moving a driveway fifteen feet, we'll just have to come back before either, I mean, you have to.
Right.
I don't think you can have your current, have that much flexibility.
No.
But if they made them put the curbing in or something like that, I mean, you could probably let that, be fine with that or something, but I think if they move the driveway, that would be something that you'd have to look at.
Is there any, uh, further discussion by the board? Seeing none, would be, um, pertinent to have a motion at this point?
Make one, but I don't wanna steal all the motion this time. I'll make a motion to approve case number twenty-two dash zero zero four dash S I T, um, with our standard conditions, fees paid, planned copies, um, original M I L R, uh, for signature. And I would also like to have the two conditions, that the camper parking be limited to the gravel area with no parking allowed within the entry drive. Uh, the twenty, twenty-four foot wide drive coming in, um, and hours of operation will be seven AM to seven PM, um, or by special appointment as needed. Yeah, and, um, copies of all, I think, yeah, I think it's in our standard, but copies of all state permits, DOT permits, uh, septic permit, uh, provided to the town once received.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
That's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Anderson, any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries six zero zero, uh, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just gonna give them a second. The next item on the agenda is a conceptual review from Master Framing, two forty stage road, map twenty-nine, lot eight, sub lot one A. Do we have anybody here for that case?
Give me.
If you could just, uh, state your name, please.
William O'Brien.
All right, and if you want, just, uh, go ahead and, so, um, conceptuals are non-binding by nature, they're here to, you know, high overview of, of a, of a request, um. It's meant to just facilitate conversation back, back and forth and help, help applicants with the, with direction before they go through all the costs and fees and everything of, of a plan. Or see if one may be necessary, so.
So we currently, um, we'd like to lease the Burnout Lumber Yard, um, two of their buildings, one's lumber storage. That they currently have lumber stored in, we would be storing lumber, the same as they're currently using it. And then the building where they were manufacturing timbers, we would like to build wall panels. So we'd be just utilizing two of their buildings on site currently and then storing wall panels and then distributing wall panels from the location. It's all wood, uh, what we do is we build wooden walls, we put the, we just build them in a factory setting. Eliminating, you know, human error of cutting and nailing and squaring and. So we, we automate the process to make a better product.
I think it's pretty common, uh.
Makes the building go faster too.
Any, any, do you have any idea of like how much, like how many employees you'll have on site, any, any, do you have?
Yeah, so, uh, currently it would be ten employees on site, um, two vehicles, I mean, we're shipping with pickup trucks and like forty-foot trailers, so there's no. We're, we're not using eighteen-wheelers, I mean, so there's not, every, all the loads are under thirty thousand D V W. And, I mean, we're incoming material loads probably, um, two to, two trailers a week would be incoming. Um, into the facility.
Yeah, and then how many, so, how many trips out a day would you propose?
Two, two trips out a day.
Yep. And, um, and obviously the, it's a very big site, uh, a lot of, um, it's not paved, but a lot of gravel surfaces, if I remember correctly. Plenty of parking currently.
Yeah, more than.
No proposed new storage, parking or offsite, anything like that.
Yes, sir.
And, um, if I can, I see Mr. Fernald in the audience, if I can put you on the spot, I feel like a few years ago, during another, either directly. From you all, from yourselves or from another, when another applicant was here.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, I, I feel like, I, I, and I apologize to put you on the spot, but I feel like at one point. This board had granted approval to you for the, your buildings as long as the use was similar to what current, do you, do you remember, I couldn't find minutes. Do you, do you remember? I couldn't find minutes of it, but I feel like that discussion occurred.
Probably.
Yeah, I remember.
Probably did.
I went through all the minutes, I could find, I thought it was when Mr. Colby was still here, our prior, prior uh building inspector, so, um. But I saw you and I wanted to take the chance to ask if, if you remembered, because I was gonna try to pinpoint that so I could get the verbiage from it, but. Appreciate that. So I'll bring it to the board. Any discussion, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so, and then for our office space, we're gonna bring in a trailer, so that way we would, because there's no septic or water at, at the location. So we would then be usel- utilizing, you know, like a porridge on a company that would just be pumping a tank in the trailer.
Like one of the Will Scott trailers with like the built-in bathroom?
Yep.
I'm gonna deal with that on the commercial. Would that just require some different permitting from Dale from a building perspective? Right, like?
Dale, uh.
Cause I, I was just thinking of it as like, cause I know, wasn't there some talk about like people bringing RVs onto the land similarly?
I think Dale needs to do a little more research on, I think he needs to do a little more information on as well.
Okay.
I think we had, we had a conversation.
Okay.
Usually we provide like an engineer tie-down plan. That's usually the, the biggest concern is like the, the, the trailer's not gonna blow away. I mean, it's, and it, I can't see it happening here in the north, but, you know, that's usually what um.
I think his thought was is if it's used in other places and the clean duty was, so.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, we, we mentioned it to.
Will Scott trailers will sit there for like twenty years, they'll fall apart, but they'll, they'll sit there for a while.
Fair enough. So if they do use that relatively common and permitted in other places, I think we probably need to find it there, not to speak of that.
Okay, and there's no other, uh, there's no other trailers on the site like that, there's no other. Util, there's no other trailers like that on the site currently for any of it?
There are port of potties.
Port of potties, yes, yeah. But no other travel trailers, mowers homes.
And then another thing I was thinking, so this is in the residential, correct?
It is.
But the lot was previously zoned.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just wanna, I just wanna make.
Commercial use.
Okay, so this is a. Basically, it's a slight change of use, but it's been confirmed as a commercial property, so it's just a piece of it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure there's no variance. It's only really required, but.
Yeah, so currently, they're manufacturing timbers in there for timber frame, so we're, so we're changing from timber to wall panels, so.
Gotcha. Right, so lumber, the storage building is still storage, the current timber frame construction or proportion is just switching to.
The wood walls.
Wood walls.
Yes, sir. I have like the equipment, if you guys wanna see, like what we'll be actually assembling and stuff with that.
Yeah, and, and, no retail sales, and not, you're not gonna have customers coming on site and, and increasing traffic that way, and obviously.
No.
I think that one of my concerns with the site usually is the.
No, I mean, if we ever are able to grow, we'd love to come back and be able to do that there, you know what I mean? It would be ideal if we were able to get that big where we could, you know, distribute, but that's not in our, our plans currently.
Yep.
May I, first, there's a question I have. Um, the prefab housing construction is becoming very popular, especially up here where we're here for lots of space. To be able to have a building this, with the size and doing, you know, the price point that still works. Are you talking, it, it, is, I, when you say wall panels, I don't know necessarily what you mean. Is it, is it an interior wall panel? Are you talking about like an exterior, like the exterior frame of a house that's just prefab built and then you ship it off-site and someone assembles it?
See how the wall, so we actually have to, see how the wall's made. So we send these walls out to the sites and I have guys that assemble them on the site. So it looks, so the wall's manufactured and squared, everything's, you know, sheathed perfectly, all the nailing is right on point, there's no issues with, you know.
But I mean, how big are these pieces?
So they can only be twelve feet wide, so they're like nine by twelve.
Okay.
Usually, I mean, because we gotta move them by hand.
Okay.
Once they get them on site, but we also have to ship them across the road.
Say that again?
We also have to ship them across the roads. You can only be so big to meet DOT guidelines.
Right, so what kind of trucks are they going out with in that?
It's a one-ton pickup with a forty-foot, uh, tag trailer.
Okay.
Like gooseman.
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea, right, I mean, is you guys have your frame tables, you have pre-cut lumber and it's just, but you're able to square everything perfectly.
So we actually have a saw also that precuts all the wood.
Oh, nice.
So we feed the material into the saw and the saw, um, eliminates waste. So when our walls are all programmed, like when we, like, um, we take a hundred thousand square foot building, we'll go floor by floor. Each wall will be a, will have its own like sheet, and that sheet will be every component within that wall, stud, joint, you know, cripples, jacks, every little like bit of wood. Then the machine will take that, whatever we, if we tell the machine we put two twelve footers on the machine, that will determine.
It does the math, it's, yeah.
Everything down, so you're, I mean, it's, eliminates waste completely. I mean, we can get down to one percent. Whereas stick framing in the field is fifteen, eighteen percent. And the cost of wood right now, that's, it's a huge savings.
Yeah. Is it, are you guys, you mentioned like a hundred thousand square feet, are you, is it a mix of residential and commercial or, cause you can use this, obviously, the style of building for both, but?
Yeah, so, right now, we're, we're just, we're gonna be manufacturing just commercial sites.
Commercial, yep.
Um, the residential, just too much programming. I mean, for a larger home, but then you get into higher quality and they, that's not the, like what we're producing.
You basically have standard templates essentially that you're.
Cause there's a couple other people out there that, and I actually build their packages, but I'm not manufacturing that package. Cause we build, so we're exclusive on Lake Winnipesaukee. We do all of like the bigger high-end homes there. I have multiple framing crews. And throughout New Hampshire and Massachusetts.
So at this point in time, you're not gonna be doing, you, you, you'll, you'll stay at this, would you say nine by twelve maximum size?
Yeah, so our walls, they, um, they usually nine to ten foot eight depending on, um, how they fall within the floor system. Cause sometimes they, they go to like the bottom of the plywood, so it's like the, whatever your height of, like your floor choice is, sometimes that wall comes up, you know, at that height. So that, there's a, sometimes a couple variants on some walls.
But, but shipping off the site, like, full, like house size, single-family house size, um.
No, these walls are all stacked on top of each other.
Right, so, but you're not, you, I guess what I wanna make sure is that if they get bit past the point of shipping off-site. Um, using the type of truck that you just described, to the point where it's getting to a much larger truck. Would we know about that and would it come back here? Because that's, does to me seem like it's starting to get past, um, what's being talked about right now. I just wonder if like, I guess it's, does the board get to see it that way, is what, you know, how, how to? Does it mean?
I see what you're saying, but historically, it had logging trucks, right? The driveway there is what, forty feet, forty feet wide at the, at one fifty-two? Yeah, and it's a state road, too.
Yeah, choke points.
I mean, cause right now, we're doing it because of fuel cost, so it'd be more economical for me to actually be running eighteen-wheelers and moving panels. But due to fuel costs and stuff, we're changing our operation. And we purchased the forty-foot like gooseman trailers and trucks for right now. So I mean, I'm not, for me, I'm not changing that for, for at least four years, cause now I'm into it. There's no, I, I'm committed to, you know, it, um.
I didn't know about the logging history.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the site was, uh, the site formerly was, was front of lumber, was, uh, in, 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 uh, and then front of firewood. Uh, so it was a mixed operation of, of lumber that was processed on premise, um, brought in from, uh. From, from other land and such, so. Is there any additional discussion by the board? Mr. Davis?
Are we gonna need comments by the fire department and the police department, seeing as this is a residential zone?
Um, so I, I think this goes back to, this where it goes back to, are we even gonna need an application before us? So is this considered a change of use that would require, or expansion of use, or something that would trigger a site plan review? Uh, or is it considered just a, a morphing of that? That's what I was trying to get to.
An operational change, really.
I would think it would be a, a, what you, the, a similar use that we're moving into. That sounds like a similar use.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I think it, it, it does seem like it's a similar use to what's being, what, what has been done in there previously and what's currently being done with the timber framing.
Yeah, so the definition of change of use within our site plan regulations is the replacement of an existing use by a new use. But not including a change of ownership, tendency, or management, where the previous nature of the use, line of business, or other function is substantially unchanged. So, the sounds of it, to me, except for the addition of, of a kind of a, um, management trailer or, or bathroom trailer, it's a. I feel like it's, it's substantially unchanged, and then the building inspector, I think, you, you know, you would be working with them regarding the, uh, the trailer part of the bathrooms. And, um, you know, depending on what they say for permitting, if there's a permit or something, needs to come back to us again, but, um.
Are you guys saying that you don't even think they have to come back to us for?
Right.
To do this project? They have to go get permits from the town, but not before this board again.
Right. Right, the, the, my interpretation of it, directly by what triggers a site plan review and whether this would be a change of use. Is what's being proposed tonight or it's being discussed tonight, it, it seems like it's, it's a substantially unchanged function. It's just a change of, uh, the tendency.
From, from modernizing the business.
So we've, we've had a discussion about a site plan review. I gave you one in nineteen eighty-two. That was only forty years ago. But anyways, uh, no problem updating that through the summer months here. And then we can provide you with who's on site, what they're doing, and traffic flow and whatever else.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
That would be very helpful.
It's time, it's time.
Yeah, I, I don't, for this case, I don't.
I think that almost is more of a benefit just for the town.
Yeah, I don't think.
Because of, uh, fire, fire might wanna know who's in what building. I think that's, that's about it.
At this point, I don't think it's necessary for this, this applicant, um, to go through that expense or that, that process. Again, if, if the use changed substantially, being increases in size, increases in deliveries and retail sale, things like that, that could flag for, for a change. Um, but by the sounds of it, the, uh, what I'm hearing anyway is that the nature of it and the scope of it is no more than what had been existing there. When it was brought over.
Right.
But.
It's, it's, it sounds like Dale will be the one just writing permits, updating permits.
Yep, and if something during that discussion flags him, he'll, he'll tell you.
Yeah, that's right.
Any, uh, further discussion?
No, I agree with that.
And I was looking at the arrow, does that mean that, are there still gonna be unused buildings on site, or is this primarily going to?
We're getting filled up between what we use and the people we have there, but there's, there's still room, and it is, there's room to develop smaller areas within the, the larger buildings, too.
Gotcha.
But that doesn't really seem to be our market, so we haven't put a lot of energy in, into that.
Yep.
I wanna agree with all that.
Alright, do you have any other questions for us?
No, it's great. I'm excited.
They just work with the building inspector and, uh, and they'll, they'll guide you.
Great, we appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You also.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda, oh, oh, is, uh. Is the signing of our, so we had, uh, zoning amendment updates, uh, and also the signing of our bylaw, uh, just the sign, the signature sheets for the amended versions of both those. Do we have, uh, signature sheets?
So, um, I do have the signature sheet for bylaws. I couldn't find a signature sheet for zoning. Is there traditionally one?
I don't remember there being one.
I think you just, I mean.
I think it just, it's the date, right?
Yeah, man.
The town has voted on it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that might, it might be because, yeah, the town, since we vote on it.
I figured it wasn't because it was voted, so it's.
Right.
So, yeah, just on the cover sheet, we're just gonna change or add the date, whatever that is for twenty-two.
If that ever, if that ever goes to a second page, let's just delete them all, keep the most current date on there. It's getting kind of silly.
Make reference to the last ordinance copy of it.
Yeah, maybe something like that. I was thinking like maybe the last five, five changes or something. I don't see how any of that information.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
Kill space.
And I do think that the copy that I sent you with the zoning, one of the, uh, copies, I can't remember, uh, bylaws and zoning, still has Charlie's comment in it, and I figured I'd have to get rid of it.
Oh, good.
So, so if you open it and you see Charlie's comment, I have rectified that situation.
Yeah, so obviously, the only thing that, before it gets published online, if it's not there already, is just, uh, the, the, the appendix with the Nottingham roads. Any of those that were, actually, those are just a private town. I don't think those would have changed. I thought there was another spot where it mentioned the emergency lanes.
I think that's in the master plan. I don't know if it's in the zoning.
So never mind. So, yeah, so, so that, that's, that's fine. And then you have the page for us to sign for that, great.
I, I am going to try this, but I like when your, when your PDF table of contents is clickable.
Oh, yeah, I know, that's.
I'm gonna try to look, I can, I can create a PDF and send it to you all. I think that's best. I don't think you should have Word copies, you know, disrespect, I just don't think anybody, I don't think Word copies should be floating out there.
No, it should be PDFs.
I, I can create those. I don't know if you can, but I can create those and send those around, but I am gonna try to make it clickable. I've never done that before, but it may involve changing the Word document and I don't wanna have to get into that, cause it's, I don't wanna get in any.
Sometimes it has, cause now the, the forms of the dog, the doc X, doc T, like, all the file names have changed, that'll allow you to do that, but I can't remember which one.
Yeah, so I, I'm not making any promises, but I can get you, I won't circulate, I, I would ask people to not be carrying or holding on to Word documents.
I thought about that.
Don't want to.
I'm like, I should convert it to PDF.
Yeah.
Usually I, I convert the file version of things with the PDFs, but.
Cause you don't wanna accidentally hit delete or something like that and not realize it two months later and.
And then take a stand on something.
Something, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's the hill you die on, and it's like, oh, because, yeah, yeah. So anyways, um, I, I, either Kevin or I will do that and I may look into trying to get clickable. It's just a bad thought.
Appreciate that. Yeah, Captain, you just pass it around with the sign.
That would be awful.
Um, public comment, this is the, the mo- moment of the night we always reserve for anybody from the public to come in and, uh, and have conversations with us. Can't be about specific properties or applications or projects. Um, there's nobody here tonight, but we do, again, reserve this time every, every meeting. Uh, we had one set of minutes from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'd sent some edits out, did you get?
So you would send edits a little bit later and then I actually got some from Gary.
Okay.
Alternates or?
A couple hours ago, so I haven't even had a chance to update them, so.
I think it makes sense to, to table those until our next meeting. Um, so we'll skip right to the, uh, select board, staff board member updates. Um, I'll just go, uh, around the table. We'll start with Ms. Jones. Any, any updates for you?
No, I have none.
Mr. Davies?
All set.
Um, it's Bartlett.
Board of Selectmen, uh, we, uh, uh, under House Bill seventy-nine, which led to RSA twenty-eight, uh, the, uh. Which is now required every town has a health board, Board of Selectmen, and the, um, building inspector is now the health inspector. So, uh, we're gonna be sending Dale out for additional training, uh, and then, uh, we'll be meeting regularly, uh. During our regular sessions, we'll be discussing, uh, health, I don't know how often that may be, maybe once a month, I'm not sure, uh, but that's one, one thing. Um, uh, the thing is that nine-one-one, um, it looks like that's gonna be a big deal, uh, it.
Ninety percent, is that the number?
Ninety percent of the household numbers could, could, not set in stone, but could change. And there will be a public session for, um, so the, you know, public input and all that.
So the.
It's important for us to get compliant with E nine-one-one and all that, cause like some of these roads, like the, the, the lake roads, where they have some of these offshoots. They may have to be renamed as another road, so, which would require renumbering and, and all that, so.
Resigning.
But the main roads and things are pretty much.
That could still be up in the air, too, um, but when, when you say ninety percent, I'm, I'm sorry?
Like Kennet Road and Priest Road and all those. Of, of the longer, oldest standing roads, like Mitchell Road?
Well, when, when I, when I, when, how I read it is if they say ninety percent, I'm assuming that it's gonna affect some of these.
Everybody else, yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
Almost all of them, except for the state roads.
Yeah.
My understanding with you and I one-one-two is like, so something like Mitchell Road, there, uh, there might. My understanding with you and I one too is like, so something like Mitchell Road, there, uh, there might not be a need to change the name. But Mitchell Road has a lot of space where there's frontage available.
Yes.
And E nine-one numbering is usually based on a, the starting point is, alright, what's your minimum frontage?
Right.
And they kinda go off that, so there's a huge stretch of land. They need a gap there in numbers. And, I don't know, numbering has changed over the years. A lot of times it's just left to somebody at town hall, so that's where the numbers, most people see number changes. So some of these streets where they were designed for subdivision to, you know, at the minimum frontage, they might not change, cause there's no subdivision allowed, but.
And where the road names, where I see it, uh, changing is some of the lake roads.
Right.
You know, where they've got multiple tuckaway shores and you'd like one of them, you know, uh, I could see.
Fingers there are off of those.
Yeah, I, I could see all that changing over there, uh, you know, over here on Nottingham Lake and, you know, North River Lake. Uh, all that, I, I could foresee that changing as well.
Yeah.
And there's a list of roads, you know, I mean, again, we'll help public input, uh, as we go down each, 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 uh, road as to what that name change will be. But, um, but going forward, it's gonna make it easier for fire, police and fire for responding, uh, to the residents and, and then so on, so, um.
Often, I feel like that gets coordinated with like the GPS companies, so like, there's no que- there's not like a question mark of what area this number is.
Right, right.
It's kinda like going, trying to correct a bad practice, basically, so it's, it's trying to go back and fix, fix what, you know. Again, all this happened, a lot of them was camps, so it didn't really matter as much, you know, but now they're houses and.
Yeah, we, we've been a little behind on that compared to some of the surrounding towns, but we're, we're gonna get there.
Yep.
So, and then, um, fire department, I guess, blew a head gasket in one of their trucks. That's helped for repairs, um. We have contracts out for roads, uh, Brock's, uh, paving company, uh, will be doing the paving again on some of these roads. I don't have the list of roads as of yet, uh, but I can update everybody.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see who those send up.
Yeah, Kenya, because our road's falling apart, uh, it is. Come take a look at it.
Okay.
Um, how's the, how's the fire department doing with trying to find new?
So I spoke to the fire chief and the lieutenant, um, and they said they, they got some people going, coming through the pipeline and they, they. I feel confident that they'll have members on board when they're set to put these people in place, so.
For this fall?
Yes, September, I believe.
Are we still, um, so obviously I don't think, none of the paving projects that I read of are really major reconstruction or anything, but.
No, so do they.
I know the prior board chair, Mr. Ruinice, you know, discussed. I don't think we ever engineered our roads, you know, so it was like, they were always gonna repave, re, you know, kinda redone. So I don't know, hopefully that's just kept in mind. If, if another big project comes up, that it, you know, that we potentially have it go for that extra cost, if, depending on what it is.
Well, if we ever finish Ledge Bottom Road, that'd be definitely one that will most likely, uh.
Well, because it was engineered, that's why it was a sticker shock of how little road you get for that dollar figure, but it's a, it's an engineered road that has a proper base, which. I'd say ninety percent of the roads in town probably don't, so.
Excellent.
Uh, nothing for me.
Uh, nothing for me. I do have a, uh, an update from Ms. Mooney regarding the conservation, conservation commission. She's, uh, that they had a public hearing scheduled. For May ninth, which was this past Monday, uh, that was continued to May twenty-third, conference room one, uh, with the select board in attendance. Uh, regarding public input to use monies from the town's conservation fund to assist in paying off the Mulligan Forest Conservation Easement bond debt. So it'll be a public, uh, public meeting that night. Um, for myself, I, I do have something, uh, at a prior meeting, we talked about potentially seeing if we could get DOT on board to do a corridor study for Route four.
Yeah.
Um, I have reached out to SRPC, um, you know, kept Blair in the loop on that. Uh, and reached out to Colin Lentz as well, um, James Burden, who also happens to wear the hat as the Northwood planner, so that works out well. And then I've reached out to Lee, uh, Karen Rossi for the planning, land use administrator there, and Barrington, and I'm blanking on that person's name. And I'll be drafting either a letter or just an email to those towns to see. One thing for us, you know, I'm looking for guidance on from, probably from SRPC is when you do a corridor study. What extent do we do? You know, is it shorter, better, uh, or, you know, cause you could go the whole stretch of Route four from Portsmouth to Concord. And get some very valuable information, but I think it'd be probably too much information, uh, so for me, I was thinking Lee Traffic Circle to somewhere in Northwood. Point to be determined, you know, with, with Northwood's input probably, or the Epsom line or something.
You think about it too, those are some of the, within that are some, I'd say more of the trickier intersections.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would almost say from, where did you say to stop on this end?
Lee Circle.
Yeah, definitely the Lee Circle, um, to maybe, uh, the one twenty-seven, Route four, the Deerfield, the, where the intersection is by the. The Jeep dealership.
Yeah, so that gets right to Epsom, that's up to.
Yeah, but, yeah.
One oh seven?
Yeah, we have one oh seven, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking about shortening, you know, one oh seven to, cause it stays at Northwood if we hit the other one oh seven north, I think it is.
Or go from traffic circle to traffic circle.
Yeah. I think that's four extra miles if I stretched it out.
Yeah.
Blair, you have, you, you, um, experience with these where, is it better to kinda keep it shorter and more condensed, or?
I mean, my experience is that two things will happen. Whoever's reviewing it at the DOT will say, have we done anything already on this stretch? Uh, especially at the ends, that could maybe bring it in. Like, I imagine they've probably done something, at least in some part at the Lee Circle, right?
They would have had to for the improvement.
Yeah, so they probably have some.
At one twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so that may be something that sort of organically limits it. It may also be, you're fighting against other projects, so they may just say, hey, listen, you asked for ten miles, we can do five. So I would say ask for ten. Let them make the choice to shorten. Don't ask for something egregious, Portsmouth to Concord. But I would say ask for probably the larger of it, and then let them come back to you, cause the chances are they're gonna shrink it down. They probably have more requests than they have money for. So that's, that's just generally my experience in these types of things. I don't have a specific example of the time when I did something like.
And to that point too, I mean, you might say whatever that total mileage is, ten, and then you find that they give you five, and you just break out stretches that. Bunch together the problem intersections in the different towns.
And that's the other thing too, is you could, you might get tepid responses from some communities, like, yeah, we're in, but like, we're trying to push for this thing over here. We're not gonna push this one over here. And that may break up your corridor, you know, like, support.
Yeah.
I just don't know how much this guides them to in there, on the states, you know, speed limits and things like that, because obviously Route four, you know, you have a fifty zone and a fifty-five. And now, but now you have a lot more stuff coming on into those areas. On the Barrington side, after you leave the Lee Circle, you do that first passing zone, we're going west. Right as it, passing zone ends, there's driveways for multifamilies, you know, immediately right after it ends, you know, it's a, it's a crest of a hill, it's. So I don't know, some of those things have occurred since then, and not that I wanna make, make it take longer for people to get anywhere, but, um.
I swear too, the speeds have gotten up on Route four in the last couple of years too, just. I think there's less cars on the road for a while, so people felt, they thought they could go faster, and I think those speeds have been kept up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, um, so I'll keep it with Lee, I'll add Epsom and make it to the Epsom Circle, um. And see what they say for input. I'll reach out to Epsom, uh, tomorrow. And, uh, go from, and then draft a email, email or a letter, just keeping it pretty informal at this point, and then see if you can send this and then draft a letter, either as a group. From every board or, uh, from every planning board or just in one ourselves to, to meet with DOT.
Probably a good time too, cause I imagine this is when DOT is working on stuff already for the fall, or.
Copycats.
Yes, stuff to even consider at this point, yeah.
Ignorant question. Have, anybody know what county Epsom's in? Are they with SRPC? No, right.
It's Merrimack, I think.
Is it Merrimack?
No, are we? And they're not with.
I mean, I was in, I was Merrimack and Charleston, so I think Epsom is still Merrimack?
That was only.
And I don't know if they have a planner, so I don't know if they use, uh, Merrimack's.
They don't have select old.
That's good, is it?
They don't have a town administrator.
That's the other part that could create a, uh, not a headache, but I guess you get there is, then you have two different regional planning commissions right now. It would keep it Lee, Barrington, Nottingham and Northwood, where else do I have it?
You also can keep it with one district office, cause somewhere in there is a change to a different district office.
That's not something you want to. So I, I revise, I will keep it between those four towns and, uh, and DOT could be the, the deciding factor if they wanna add. That's it for me. Ms. Anderson?
Um, so, um, SRPC, um, I think Gary had mentioned a couple of, um, meetings ago that they're doing, uh, looking for public input on a housing, um, survey. That continues, and then they just, um, more recently, um, have one on active transportation too, so looking for public input, um, on, on, uh. That's all I got.
I actually don't have anything. Yeah, yeah, nothing. Yeah, brings us to the end. Any, anybody have anything else they'd like to? Oh, yeah, you still unmute. It's, it's good, you, you gotta, you don't even have a mic.
What's he do for us? Um, I just have a bylaw that needs to be designed.
Okay.
For, uh, for a little line adjustment, that would give a few.
Okay. Alright, I appreciate that. Motion to adjourn?
Second, so moved.
Second. Put your hand up, hands in. Motion second, all those favor, thank you.
Aye, aye, aye.
Have a great night, everybody.